Good evening. Welcome to the August 29th version of the Bellingham City Council. Thank you all for being here. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. And if you, oh, sorry, one announcement. On Monday, October 17th, 2016, the City Council will host a public hearing on the matter of the Comprehensive Plan Update at 7:00 PM in council chambers. If you could all please join me, and Michael Lilliquist is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lilliquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Our first item tonight, and for those of you who came for public comment, we do have public comment after our two presentations and our public hearing. So we're going to start this evening with a presentation by Puget Sound Energy by Scott Harder. Scott, if you'd like to come down to the podium, he's going to share about a campaign that PSE is doing in the city of Bellingham. And Elizabeth, are you going to help him with visuals? Thank you.
My name's Scott Harder, and I'm with Puget Sound Energy as a community outreach coordinator. Just want to take a few minutes of your time this evening to bring you up to date on our sweeps campaign. Thank you, Council, for letting us present tonight. PSE is starting our sweeps campaign here in the next few weeks, but I just want to tell you real quick that PSE is Washington State's oldest local energy utility. We serve over 1.1 million electric customers and more than 795, 790,000 natural gas customers. PSE focuses on safe, reliable, and affordable energy service. We're committed to engaging and educating its customers, become more energy efficient. As a leader in energy efficiency, PSE has helped its customers save more energy than any other Northwest utility. The company's commitment to serving communities and to helping make them better places to live and work is as steadfast as ever, and PSE continues to be locally managed and operated. So our campaign overview for the sweeps is in 2016 and 17, we're going to reach every electric customer with the opportunity to receive a free LED light bulb. Every customer will receive a direct mail encouraging them to fill out a business reply card to request the LED bulb, which will arrive via mail within 10 weeks. Select communities will get the LEDs hand-delivered from our outreach team. We're also doing some retail events, and we're partnering with retailers and manufacturers to further engage Bellingham residents with energy efficiency products. In addition to the door knocking, we will host two retail events at the Lowe's in Bellingham on Saturday 10th and Saturday 17th, and the 17th. During the event, Bellingham will be able to receive another free LED and learn more about ways they can shrink their bill. And with our door-to-door outreach, we have a team of seven staffers who will deliver the free LEDs in Bellingham from the 19th of September to October 7th. And during this outreach, the residents will get the opportunity to learn more about how to become a more energy efficient and how to shrink their energy bills. We'll also have A-frames. They'll be wearing bright yellow T-shirts, so you can see them throughout the neighborhoods, and so residents will know that we're in their community. So on the two maps here, you can see there's an overview on the left, and on the right is two little closer views of the neighborhoods we're going to be reaching out to. And what we're hoping to achieve is letting everyone know that even small upgrades can have a very large impact. So if every customer in Bellingham replaced one incandescent light bulb with an energy-efficient LED bulb, this would save approximately 64,000 kilowatts over the lifetime of the bulb. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. You must have been impressive. Usually, we don't allow people to clap in the chamber.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Lilliquist?
No questions, but as you may have noticed when you came in City Hall today, there's a giant sign there charting our progress in the Bellingham Community Energy Prize Challenge. City of Bellingham, along with 50 other cities, are trying to lower our electrical bills. Whoever reduces the most and has the best plan for the future will win $5 million. So getting an LED is one step you can take towards helping us win that prize.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate you visiting us tonight. Okay, we have another exciting presentation for us this evening. We have a presentation by flag designer Brad Lockhart. Brad, if you want to come down. And I have been asked to let everyone know that this, this flag has come through the community and through the Bellingham Partnership, and this was an organic uprising, but to let you know that this flag has actually not been legally sanctioned by the city or reviewed by our Community Development Department. So just letting everybody know that this is, we are following due process, and no, this has not been designated as the city flag.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council, for inviting me to speak today. My name is Brad Lockhart. I'm a local graphic designer, animator, illustrator, professional creative guy, and today I'm speaking about this flag that I designed roughly one year ago today, or in the realm of that. It was created for the Downtown Bellingham Partnership, who hosted a open flag design contest, and it was just kind of a general, let's try an experiment, let's, let's try a new idea. And so they reached out to members of the community, creative community, specifically they reached out to graphic design firms, which I worked for, and basically invited us to participate, knowing that this wasn't spec work. It wasn't like if we won, we won $1,000. It was just volunteer skills, use your expertise, see if we can come up with something cool for the community. So they received many entries. They chose the top eight, which were displayed publicly at the Pickford Cinema, which had descriptions of the symbolism, and then they had a public forum where people could come in and vote, and look at the different flags, and get to know each other, and talk about the themes, and my flag received the most votes, rose to the top. After several months, there was a leadership change within the partnership, and about March of last year, they asked me, you know what, we want you to construct a flag, bring it to the commercial street night market, raise it, let's see what happens. And that's kind of been the story from there. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the contest, well, sorry, I already covered the contest, but I'm going to talk a little bit about city flags and what the design means, and what's happened since we raised this first flag. So the partnership hosted this flag design contest because there's really a huge upswing in municipal flags across America right now. So there are 60 cities doing exactly what we're doing right now, which is just talking about their civic identity, talking about the visual identity, and trying to create new avenues to increase civic pride and municipal pride. It's complicated sometimes to go back and change old logos and old city seals, and expensive. So people are moving into this new realm where if we've never had a flag, let's just make something new. Let's not fix something old, let's just make something new. These cities are big and small, Aberdeen, Washington, all the way to Austin, Texas. And a lot of the reason for this was this man, Roman Mars, gave a TED Talk, it was super influential, telling people like, what's a good flag, what's a bad flag? He referred to this book that I have, literally, Good Flag, Bad Flag, and he kind of laid it out for everybody, and it really sparked this huge movement that's going on right now. Here's eight proposed city flags in America. All of these are proposed, created by institutions like the Bellingham, Downtown Bellingham Partnership, nonprofits. One such, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, is this gorgeous new flag, and it's, they were voted worst city flag in America. So they had the contest, and they're like, let's see what we can do something better. And that's kind of on the docket right now. And it's just proposed, it's, it's not official, but it's, it's making its way up the ranks. So I'm going to talk a little bit about my design and what it means. Here's a sewn version of it that was created for the Kickstarter, which I'll talk a little bit about later. Let me get everybody to take a good look. So the flag has four main components. Oh, boy. This isn't the American flag, so I'm not disrespecting it by folding it weird. The first is a large blue field, which represents Bellingham Bay. The second is two white, four-sided stars that symbolize our local sailors tribes, the Lummi just to the west, and the Nuxak just to the east. It has three wavy lines, which are symbols of noisy waters, which is the translation of the word Wacom. That word comes to us from the Nuxak people. It's a place name in that it describes a physical place, the mouth of Wacom Creek, which is extremely historic for Bellingham, but it also describes the sound of all that water that crashes at the mouth of Wacom Creek. A lot of people like to fly this flag vertically, and it was designed to do so. It's well-balanced vertically and horizontally, and when you rotate it 90 degrees, it actually depicts Wacom Falls itself. And last but not least, are the four green stripes, offset of two different green hues, and these are symbols of the four original towns of Bellingham, north to south, Wacom, Seehome, Bellingham, Fairhaven, which in 1904 all came together to form what we know today as Bellingham. They feuded for years about the name, everybody wanted their town's name, but eventually they settled on Bellingham because they realized they were all in close proximity to Bellingham Bay. In fact, their western edge all touched it, as you can see in this graphic, and that is kind of depicted in the design itself. So here's the first flag my partner and I constructed from scrappy fabric. We found at Joann Fabrics. The colors weren't perfect, but it worked for the night, and there's the director of the partnership, Alice Clark, and myself, a very flattering photo of the top of my head, raising that first flag. So the partnership printed a run of 200 stickers that they sold out that night at the partnership. So the next, at the, sorry, Downtown Bellingham Night Market. So the next day, I started printing more stickers, because everybody came to me, and I wasn't, couldn't make it, can I have more stickers? So we printed hundreds, actually thousands at this point, I think we've printed about 4,000 stickers. You might have seen it on somebody's car or water bottle. The next big challenge was flags themselves. So several people said, hey, I know that this is just proposed, it's just an idea, but I want to fly it for my business, I want to fly it for my home, I want to support this project. I got quotes for several hundred dollars to construct one flag locally. I wanted to keep it made in America, though, so I found a place in Alabama. I could do a run of 50 flags, and they'd be affordable, they'd be $30 to $40. So I put together a Kickstarter, which is kind of a pre-sell website, to see if there was enough interest over the course of one month to get 50 flags to people. And I sold 50 flags in six hours. And then by the end of the campaign, we'd more than quadrupled the goal, and since that's ended, I've probably sold about another 200 more. So there's probably about 400 flags living, and you may have seen one at a brewery or your neighbor's house or something by now. So that's how they got out there. And halfway through the campaign, we received an awesome endorsement from Roman Mars himself, the man that kind of reinvigorated this whole municipal flag improvement movement, and he is flying a Bellingham flag from his home in Oakland, California, right now, which is awesome. So we started a Facebook around April to promote the project and to encourage people to send us their flags, and we've received probably 100 at this point. Here's a family that had to move to Oklahoma, but because of work, but they got to rock the flag there. There's a 911 dispatcher from Bellingham flying it from his home. We've received some incredible photos, a man that shone at Mount, shone at Mount Shuckson with his flag. I believe his caption was, "Take that, Neil Armstrong." A fleet of fishing vessels in Alaska, all Bellingham natives that spend the summer up there, working, flying it from their boats. What I really like is how people have owned it in their own way, taken it out of my hands and painted murals of it on their van, like chucking up builders, or gotten black and white tattoos of it on their arm. We get funny pet photos all the time. This man turned himself into a human flagpole at Downtown Sounds, building a 20-foot plastic totem, whatever you want to call it. We see photos from music festivals and handmade quilts, mini flags for sailboats, which are awesome, and it's showing up all over town. A lot of people have said, well, this is created downtown, it's really a downtown movement, but that's really not true. I've seen it out on the Mount Baker Highway where people, their kids go to school in Bellingham, they might not live in the city limits, but Bellingham is their home. They fly it out there, Lake Samish, Fairhaven. The biggest support, though, by far, has come from businesses, which we had no idea. There's at least 40 that I know of supporting the project right now. Begory, Asland, Casa, Running, Wild Buffalo Shakedown, Wander, Faith Life, Boundary, Black Drop, Colson, Leopold, Young Kids, Seniors, everybody, which is just really, really fun, really exciting to see. One of the biggest supports we got from the beginning was the Port of Bellingham, who I believe the day they announced, hey, we, we've come up with this idea, the port were fully supported from the beginning, like, this is great. Here's one on display at the Bellingham Airport, it has a little plaque that tells you what this flag means. There's one displayed at the main offices. Oops. Sorry, I'm going to drink some water, I'm talking really fast. So recently, I've got invited to teach some workshops to kids, which is super awesome. I got to go to the Boys and Girls Club, teach them about graphic design, which is amazing because I didn't even know that, what that was until I was in my twenties. So we've got some great future designers that we're grooming, help them paint their own flags, teach them about the different pieces and what they mean, and I quizzed them, and it was amazing. Like, by the time they left, they knew more Bellingham history than their parents did. Like, they, they knew the names of the four cities, they knew the definition of the word Wacom. And I've been invited by art teacher from Wacom Middle School and Colson Middle School, and I don't know when that's happening, if it's happening, but I'll, you know, do whatever I, I need to do. We have some great co-branding coming out, so a lot of businesses have said, hey, not only do we want to fly this, but we want to integrate it into our brand, into our identity. So we have a pint glass coming out from Colson, embroidered patch from Asland, a large run of shopping bags from the Co-op, reusable cotton bags. That skateboard is already for sale just a block away. What else? I mean, I got two calls today, people wanting hats. Mallard Ice Cream ordered 5,000 mini made-in-Bellingham stickers for all their to-go pints of ice cream that'll be in the stores, and it just keeps pouring in, and I just keep saying, yes, take it, yes, it's yours, have it, it's not mine. What's great about this market, and I'm a visual designer by trade, you know, I rebrand businesses, I just recently rebranded The Wild Buffalo and rebranded Goat Mountain Pizza, successful companies that knew they could do a little better visually. So when I designed this, I thought about, what would this look like if it were black and white on a photocopied water bill? What would it look like if it were a circle on a patch for a firefighter or a metal decal on the side of a garbage truck? And it works because it's like simple and geometric, meaningful, and it tells this rich story. So yeah, sorry, unloaded a lot on you, but just in, in closing, I understand that this contest that was hosted by the Downtown Bellingham Partnership was an unofficial contest, it was merely an experiment, it was an idea, right? And that idea has just come to fruition so rapidly that it's taking on a life beyond what I can really control, and being really owned by members of this community, owned by other people. And I understand that were the possibility of this flag to get a civic adoption, it would move into the public domain, and legally, it wouldn't be mine, it wouldn't be anyone's, it would be everybody's, which I think is really cool. You know, this, this flag is just little pieces that tell a story of Bellingham that I didn't write, I just wrote it down the way that I know how to do, so I feel like it already isn't mine, it never really was. So I want everybody to be able to enjoy it, I want all government agencies to enjoy it, I want all citizens, I want all businesses, whoever wants it, they can have it. So thank you for your time and your consideration, Council. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here, really happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. This was wonderful creativity. Okay, this is it. After this, no more clapping, okay?
No clapping. No happiness.
I understand, that was exciting. Councilmember Lilliquist, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, Brad, before you go, Roman Mars says one of the signs of a successful flag is that it is as successful unofficially as officially.
That is true.
Frankly, I would like you to become so successful, the Council has no choice to make it official.
You know, the number one rule of flag design laid out in this book is a flag should be so simple that a child should be able to draw it from memory, which is what we're putting to test at the Boys and Girls Club, and they made a better flag than I did, so I think that proves that, that point as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, anybody else have any question?
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we are going to move to our public hearing for the evening. We have a resolution authorizing the partial relinquishment of a utility easement located within vacated Bennett Avenue. Proposed resolution of the Bellingham City Council providing the city to partially relinquish pursuant to RCW 3594-040, a 100-foot utility easement located in the vacated Bennett Avenue adjacent to Highland Drive. Accessor's parcel number 370201355374000, I did practice that, on the grounds that said easement is surplus to the city's needs and is not required for providing continued public utility services. And I'm going to turn this over to Ted Carlson, our Public Works Director, to introduce it.
Thank you, I will be brief. This is a site map of the location we're talking about. It is the vacated Bennett Drive near Highland Drive. This area was vacated, this portion of Bennett was vacated back in the 50s. At that time, the city retained a 100-foot easement across the former right-of-way for future utility needs, and it has been that way ever since. We had the adjacent property owner to the north request that the city partially relinquish a portion, a portion of the easement and retain just what's needed for utilities. As I mentioned, it's 100-foot wide right now, city staff has looked at it. We do, we do have a city sewer line through there, so what you're seeing right now is the former Bennett Avenue right-of-way. The, you can see it's 50 feet, it's 100 feet from here to here. The request is related to the northern portion, the area that is hatched. The request is to relinquish 40 feet of the 50 feet of easement north of the center line. That would allow the city to retain 10 feet north of the former center line for our existing sewer line. The city has reviewed the request, reviewed the area as it relates to future utility needs. City staff does believe that the additional 40 feet to the north is in fact surplus to our needs. State law and the city's municipal code allow the city council to vacate an easement such as this after conducting a public hearing. Before the council today is a resolution that would do that very thing. Typically, the city does not pay for utility easements, so when we relinquish the easement, there is no financial impact to that. We obtain it at no fee, there is no financial transaction if we do relinquish it. So after the fact, if indeed the council does agree... What you would see is the 10 feet, the 10-foot easement right here would remain in place the entire southern half, so this 50 feet here is still an easement. We've not had any requests to relinquish that portion of the easement, so the city retains the full easement over the southerly 50 feet, and if council takes this action, we would have the 10 feet to the north of the center line, which gives us adequate width to maintain, replace, and in any way deal with the existing sewer line. So again, staff recommendation is to have council conduct a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, take action to pass the resolution. And if council has any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, questions? No? Okay. So we're going to conduct a public hearing, so I just want to make sure that if anybody signed up, that they are signed up for the hearing alone? There's nothing on that?
Nobody signed up for the hearing.
Well, that was quick and efficient. Okay, so I will, Councilmember Murphy.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Okay, we'll just back up just for one moment. So just to ensure, is there anyone here who did wish to speak on this public hearing and didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Again, this is just for this easement hearing. Anyone? Once? Twice?
Excuse me? I'm a property owner, but...
There, there's a, there's a microphone there if you'd like, sir. And if you could just state your name for that.
Press the button.
All these directions.
Really? There?
Yes.
My name's Craig Ferguson, and my wife and I own the property and have been paying taxes on the whole parcel for the past 19 years, I think now, and so we just kind of recently realized that although the road was vacated, the utility's easement still was there, including a portion of our house was part of the easement. And so I, I was going to speak if I needed to, so if there was somebody that objected to this, I can speak, but otherwise, I'm fine.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Councilmember Murphy.
I move that we pass the resolution authorizing the partial relinquishment of utility easement located within vacated Bennett Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion in front of us to pass the utility easement located within vacated Bennett Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ted. Okay, we're going to move into the public comment portion of the evening, but before we did, there's a couple of things that we would like to address. First of all, one thing is, one thing about being chair is it's a constant learning on the job. There is no guidebook, and every day and every week, we learn something new. Last session, I did not have the tools to address the public comment issue, and no one around me was really sure what to do either. My biggest concern is that everyone will feel comfortable and welcome in this council chamber. So we have reviewed our last session, and staff has come up with some ideas that will help us all to be consistent in hearing to the three-minute rule and help us all move forward in equity. So we are instilling a couple new things. First of all, concerned that people don't know that they're three minutes up when you're in the middle of conversation, so we're going to do like the county does, and we're going to give everyone a 30-second notice. So when there's 30 seconds, Elizabeth, demonstration, you'll hear a little bell. Okay? So hopefully that will be too disruptive, and you can just know that that is your 30-second notice of your time. If the speaker does go beyond the three, and then the buzzer goes off at three minutes. And if the speaker goes beyond the three minutes, the clerk will give a verbal indication into the microphone of time. Time. Thank you. All right. Demonstration's going well. If the speaker continues, the clerk will again state time into the microphone, so a person will have two notices. And then if the speaker continues to speak past the two verbal warnings given by the clerk, the council president will remind the speaker that their time is up. If the speaker chooses not to relinquish their time, at that time, the council, council will, the council will recess for five minutes. So this is how we are all going to move forward and handle this as diplomatically as we possibly can. And then before we actually get on to public comment, there were some things that happened this afternoon that we think might be of interest because we are pretty sure why a lot of you are here tonight. And, and if I can, I'm going to have Councilmember Barker introduce the subject.
Okay, so this afternoon in new and old, I guess it was in committee of the hall, council discussed some of the issues that many of you are here for. I know some here for positive, some here for negative, and the reality of the situation was the, the movement of the council was simply to open up conversations so we could get to the right ADU ordinance agreement. And what that was presented as, unfortunately, to many, some misinformation that the council had either A) made an ordinance or changed zoning, and it, it really just became a, it became something that was becoming its own, and it, it made it very difficult to try to correct the situation. There was really no fixing it at this point. So we decided that the best position at this point is to figure out how the council can work together to get the best ADU ordinance possible, and how we can work with you, the community, to kind of gain that trust, and so that you guys know, we hear you, and we understand, and we're really sorry that the misinformation was out there, and the intent was not negative, it wasn't to do anything underneath. And so we rescinded... It wasn't to do anything underneath. And so we rescinded the vote to remove the ADU, so it's back to exactly the way it was, and it was a 7-0 vote. So I'm still happy to hear anything that you all have to say, and I appreciate all the comments. And with that, is that about it?
So we are going to continue with the public comment. We have quite a few names on here. And again, if you could, please restate your name when you come to the podium. I may not do the best in pronunciation, and everybody's got different writing eligibility. So the first person on my list I have is Dixie Cheek, and then Deborah Midow, and Terry Marshall. And if you could please, as you hear your name, come on down here and come on up to the microphone. And again, we have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Dixie Cheek. I live at 1409 North Garden. That's in the York neighborhood, right next to downtown. And I just wanted to urge you to reinstate the owner occupancy of the ADU, but since you have, I will relinquish my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dixie. Deborah?
I realize we're all new at doing things at different times, but I believe the city council procedures need to proceed with civility. The public needs to be civil in their responses and pleased to the council. The council needs to be civil and respectful to the public. We are the people who put you in office. We should be collaborative together. We want to make Bellingham a safe and healthy place for all of our residents. Here are a few of my suggestions for making it easier to be collaborative and non-exclusionary. One, take full ownership if you make a mistake. Do not marginalize your part in the mistake. It happened. Take ownership, move forward, not backward by blaming others. Two, be happy that people care about our city. Know that people want input because they care. Do not be condescending to folks on the council or the public. Three, do not try to put wedges in play and play one neighborhood against another. All neighborhoods make up the city of Bellingham. Four, transparency, transparency, transparency. Five, do not favor one group over another. Listen to all. Remember, we are all components of the city of subdued excitement. We all choose to live here, and we care about the other residents, the environment, diversity, and what is happening around us in our neighborhoods. Do not give the public less credit than any other group. Do not value real estate developers and real estate agents more than the people who put you in office. Let's all work together to safeguard our communities' health, safety, and welfare. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. Terry Marshall, and then Mike Kimmuth, and Sean Wheeler.
Yeah, I was going to speak on the owner occupied requirements for ADUs, but since you voted on that, I'm just going to file this. I think I might send it to you guys and file it away in case it comes up again.
Thank you, Terry. You can give that to our city clerk if you wish to include your comments. Mike Kimmuth, Sean Wheeler, and Chris Deal.
My name is Mike Kimmich. I have been a voting citizen of this city for the last 50 years. During those 50 years, I have never felt the need to address the issue I wish to address today. Conflict of interest laws are grounded on the notion that government officials owe paramount loyalty to the public, and that personnel or private financial considerations on the part of government officials should not be allowed to enter the decision-making process. It appears to me that a violation of RCW 42.521.020, titled as published in the 2015 Legislative Ethics Manual, activities incompatible with public duties has occurred during the August 1st Committee of the Hall meeting. Due to the complexity of the Washington Legislative Ethics Manual, I will instead use an issue spotter checklist published by the Office of the Attorney General, the California Department of Justice, as a litmus test to whether a conflict of interest appears to have occurred during the above-mentioned meeting. There are four questions that should be asked, and they are as follows. One, is a state or local official participating in a government decision? Yes. Two, does this decision affect an interest in real property or an investment of $2,000 or more held by the official, or a source of income to the official of $500 or more? Yes. One council member who voted has two rental properties located in single-family zone residential areas. Number three, if so, is there a reasonable possibility that the decision will affect significantly any economic interest, e.g., real property or sources of income? Again, three for three. Yes, one council member can potentially double their income from their existing properties. Number four, are the official's economic interests affected differently than those of the general public or a significant segment of the public? Yes. Note, in general, a group must be large in number and heterogeneous in nature for it to qualify as a significant segment of the public. If the answers to the above questions are yes, the official may have a conflict of interest and be required to disqualify from participation in that decision. My first request is that whatever body has jurisdiction over ethics and conflicts of interest of public officials, launch an immediate investigation into the above-mentioned alleged conflict of interest and take whatever action is deemed appropriate. And secondly, notify the public as to the findings of that investigation and what action was taken as a result of that investigation. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Mike. Sean Wheeler, Chris Deal, and Jude Green.
My name is Sean Wheeler from the York neighborhood. The conduct of several members of the council at the August 8th meeting was abhorrent and shameful. From the onset of Ann Maggie's comments, the first citizen speaker that night, you, Mayor Linville, couldn't muster the decorum to simply face her direction, let alone listen to her thoughts. Instead, your back was to her as you carried on a conversation with someone in the audience, going so far as to leave your seat in the midst of Ann's testimony to continue that conversation. It's on the video. Two-thirds of the way through Ann's remarks, Pinky Vargas and Roxanne Murphy, you deemed it acceptable to pass notes, snicker, and giggle amongst yourselves like petulant schoolchildren. Your behavior was so out of line and distracting, Ann was forced to stop and address it herself, completely derailing her train of thought. When she then exceeded a three-minute allotment by a mere 30 seconds, you, Pinky Vargas, deemed it necessary to shatter down like an overzealous autocrat. During my opportunity to speak, you, Pinky Vargas, were out of your seat, striding toward and physically menacing me, a citizen, a mere 12 seconds after my three-minute period elapsed. All of this was within a meeting, which totaled out to less than 33 minutes in length. At minute 29 and 50 seconds, you, Pinky Vargas, are recorded as saying, quote, "We got to be careful, or we're going to beat Kathy Layman's record." This recent hostile behavior contributes to the disenfranchisement of the public and their participation in our government. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Such essential citizen engagement is already an ever-dwindling occurrence. The statewide August 2nd primary vote, which had only occurred six days prior, had a voter turnout rate of only 37.09% in Watcom County, less than two out of five, and a dismal showing by any standard. Such deplorable and unacceptable behavior serves only to exacerbate that dreadful trend. There will be a great many issues discussed within this chamber. Most of those subjects will have passionate proponents on all sides of the various issues. Regardless of their political persuasion, position, or viewpoint, every citizen deserves to be afforded the opportunity to voice their opinion, make their case, and be heard by their government in a respectful environment. If any of you are incapable of contributing to and ensuring such an environment is cultivated and protected, you have a moral and fiduciary obligation to the citizens of this community to step down. It seems an unsettling large percentage you seem to have forgotten, so allow me to remind you the fact that you were elected by us, the citizens of the city, to represent our interests. You are accountable to us and ultimately serve at our pleasure. Democracy does not work without citizen participation. It's the essence and underpinning of our governance. Actions such as yours, which directly contribute to the suppression of such vital citizen participation, in turn threaten democracy.
Thank you, Sean. There's no clapping. There is no clapping in council chambers. Thank you. Normally, I don't address any public comment, but I am going to address this one tonight. And I just want to say that I am just trying to keep everyone at three minutes, and I'm just trying to follow the same rules that I ask of everyone. That's all we're asking, is follow the guidelines. And when you don't follow the guidelines and then you're mad because you don't like what happens afterwards, that is not because I'm following a clock. That's all my job is to do.
There's been no applause.
This is not a back-and-forth, and I'm sorry to engage. I'm just saying I'm trying to follow the rules. And our next speaker is Chris Deal.
Hi, my name is Christopher Bruce Diley. Mine is on regarding the state Initiative 1491, wherein those exhibiting mental illness cannot buy a gun, of which signatures were gathered in Bellingham for it to be voted on in November. This may sound a little silly because I'm not a scholar, but I have a thesis, antithesis, and a synthesis. The thesis is found in Martin Luther King Jr.'s letter from Birmingham Jail, quote, "Let us consider a more concrete example of just and unjust laws. An unjust law is a code that a numerical or power-majority group compels a minority group to obey but does not make binding on itself. This is difference made legal. By the same token, a just law is a code that a majority compels a minority to follow and that it is willing to follow itself. This is sameness made legal," end quote. The antithesis is President Obama's taking unilateral action for common sense gun laws, as reported by the BBC January 2nd, 2016. Initiative 1491 reflects unilateral action as it imposes an express obligation on but one party. In this instance, those exhibiting mental illness cannot buy a gun. The next minority group to surrender gun rights might be the homeless, then the gypsies, then homosexuals with pink triangle tattoos, and so on. Since this is antithetical to Martin Luther King's point, it requires a synthesis. That would be each person that votes to take away gun rights from a specified minority group simultaneously waives their right to own a firearm. That would be more in line with King, as opposed to the haves compelling the have-nots to give up their gun rights. This synthesis would create a safer environment for all instead of just those most self-centered. The problem here is that King wrote earlier in the letter from Birmingham Jail, quote, "Lamentably, it is a historical fact that privileged groups seldom give up their privileges voluntarily. Individuals may see the light and voluntarily give up their unjust posture, but as Reinhold Niebuhr has reminded us, groups tend to be more immoral than individuals," end quote, generally speaking. Yet the point is, no group of lobbyists are going to place that option on the ballot for individuals to simultaneously vote to waive their right to own a firearm when voting to compel others to surrender theirs, which quite likely means after the November election, Hitler and Timothy McVeigh would be free to buy a gun, but not those of us exhibiting mental illness by talking to ourselves in public. With 30 seconds left, you know, this is pertinent because of the next year, the federal government may go ahead and have the grizzlies reintroduced into the Cascades. And those of us that are homeless, with the skyrocketing rental rates, and with the waiting list for housing closed since November, they're presently closed. We can't even get on a waiting list here. We may have to sleep in a tent in the Cascades amongst grizzly bears, so we may need a gun. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I have Jude Green, Steve Abel, and Yoshi Ravel.
Good evening, everybody. I'd first like to thank Terry, Jean, and Michael for their votes regarding the ADU issue. And secondly, I think that it's really important that all of you listen when people are talking. I mean, I've stood up here a lot, and I haven't really felt heard or listened to. And I think maybe there's been a large outcry at this point on this issue, and, you know, people like Ann, Mackey, and other people from neighborhoods stand up here and give you the best of their research and experience and ideas, and I don't really feel that they're heard. And so I think that that needs to become a priority. I really agree with Mike, who talked about someone who stands to gain financially from decisions that they make on this council. And I would think that if someone stands to gain financially, they need to recuse themselves from any vote that would propel that forward. And I don't understand why, you know, I think that the other councilwomen seem to be overly friendly to development interests, and I don't really get that. But, you know, you're supposed to be representing us, and I don't feel represented by you. I think the council needs, I mean, the city needs to figure out how to enforce the laws and ordinances that we already have on the books. I had a discussion with Rick, and there's, I guess, a new hire, and the purpose is to address those issues. But if the things that we have in place aren't working, then you need to figure out some way that they can. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jude. Steve Abel, Yoshi Ravel, and Christopher Granis.
Good evening, counsel. You've taken care of my topic, so I don't need to take up any more of your time. I was going to argue to restore the owner occupancy language into the housing chapter, but it sounds like you've taken care of that. I do realize, though, that the comp plan does not have the force of law, so I'm going to keep my comments handy for the public hearing when the ordinance comes up for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yoshi Ravel, Christopher Granis, and then Scott Hillis.
Thank you. My name is Yoshi Ravel. Thank you to members of the TV audience, members of the audience, staff, city council, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your attention. I came to speak about the less fortunate, the homeless, those in prison, refugees. It is a verdict of history that when a culture neglects the voiceless, when a community neglects the voiceless, that community soon collapses. And the Bible states very emphatically that we are to take care of the widow, the orphan, and the stranger. That is, the voiceless. Those who are homeless, those who are imprisoned and hurting, and the refugees. If we don't tend to the voices, and we don't tend to the needs of those who are suffering, our community will collapse. A community only works when it works for the least. Not too long ago, well, I guess it was a while ago, I heard a lady come in here and talk about not wanting her children to see the homeless, that somehow that was a problem. And I think that's a problem for all of us. We want to hide our problems. We want to pretend that they don't exist. We want to pretend that the homeless, and those who are in prison, and refugees are not our fellow human beings, and this is 100% false. If our culture doesn't work for the least, it does not work for all of us because we hide from the pain within ourselves. We pretend that we're not in the pain that we're in. If we tend to the needs of the least, then we find our own humanity. We find our own hearts, and we legitimately stop our own suffering. hearts, and we legitimately stop our own suffering. Now, what is it the homeless, and those in prison, and the refugees, and those who are suffering need? What a person that is suffering needs most is kindness. What a person who is suffering needs most is love. What a person who needs most who is suffering is the respect, is to be looked at and recognized as a fellow human being, not as an afterthought, not as something to be shunted aside, because that's what we all want. None of us wants to be shunted aside. All of us wants to be loved and respected as fellow human beings. I thank you all for your attention, and I wish you all health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Christopher Granis, then Scott Hillis, and David Cunningham.
So I am Christopher Granis. I'm going to read my last sentence modified first. I said, "Please rescind," but since you already did, I'll say thank you for rescinding the owner occupancy, the vote to eliminate the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. I want to give my comments, though, because I think I have some substance to the issue ideas here that I'd like to put on the record. I support ADUs, both attached and detached. I also believe it's of utmost importance that the owner occupancy requirement be kept in the Comp Plan. It is required by the Washington Housing Policy Act. It is essential to maintaining neighborhood character. Owner-occupied properties are better maintained, and owner occupancy helps to hold down the increasing cost of homes. That will result if mega landlords can get more rent per property. The Washington Housing Policy Act requires Washington to provide homeowners, Washington cities to provide homeowners with a means of obtaining through tenants in either the ADU or the principal unit, rental income, companionship, security, and services, as well as add affordable units to the housing stock. The intention of this requirement was to assist regular people, working-class families, a means to obtain homeownership and pay their mortgage. It was never intended as a means to add to the profits of the rental and real estate industry. To eliminate the owner occupancy would be a gift to the mega landlords. The wealthy landlords are already competing with first-time homebuyers, and if owner occupancy is eliminated, it will take more homes out of the market that might have been available for potential homebuyers of more modest means. It will be even more difficult for young families to purchase their own homes. The intent, I know, is to lower the cost of housing, but the result would be increased housing costs, and there's no evidence that rents will go down. It will do nothing for the homeless who can't afford to rent anything. The action to remove the owner occupancy requirement is a backdoor rezone of all single-family neighborhoods, from single-family to duplex, without the public process required for zoning changes. I do recommend that you go through that zoning process if you do want to continue with changing that zone. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Christopher. Scott Hillis, David Cunningham, and Wendy Schumay?
Hi, my name's Scott Hillis. I have some emails to pass out. Did everybody get my email today, letter? And did you get a chance to review those documents? Is there any questions as far as how my position on the subject? Those emails are showing where Stellar J had solicited a bid from me on three different occasions, wanting a plumbing and HVAC-specific bid. Nowhere in those emails does it say that they had planned to do it themselves, or that I would be bidding against their internal team. They're a general contractor. The RCW clearly states for them to have to provide, in a project over $1 million, that they have to list subcontractors of license. And when I read my, that attachment, that email, also had my original protest and Stellar J's rebuttal to that. Did you guys get a chance to look at that? If you didn't, you can. And in Stellar J, when I challenged them in that protest, it said they didn't have the responsibility, because they would have to have on-staff at the time of the bid, a licensed plumber and a technician certified to work with refrigerants, on-staff at the time of the bid. And in their response, they came back with how much money they've done in projects, $500 million, not the fact that they actually did have those members on-staff. If, being a professional in the industry of mechanical, I own the company, and if someone were to tell me that I did not have the members, or the responsibility to do this project from the plumbing and HVAC end, I would say, "Sure, I do. Here's a list of the plumbers, here's a list of our techs, we are responsible to do this." They skirted that, and they didn't address the issue, and they skirted around and misrepresented the RCW that states any bidder cannot have a protest. Well, how, how am I, that says 50. Oh, okay. All right, all right. You know, and I ask you, how am I not a bidder? When I bid to the entire field, the RCW says "any bidder," it doesn't say "prime bidder," "general contractor," it says "bidder." And they skirted that by trying to say that they are the only ones, or the ones who only submit a bid are the ones who can only have a protest. I ask you that you look at the documents and you see to it that you have the sole discretion to award this contract. This company is a $500 million company, they're about the money, and they're not about, and they've cheated and defrauded this county or this city, as far, in my opinion. I could go on and on, but they had their chance to prove responsibility, and they failed. I ask you that you reject their bid, and you follow procedure and go to the next lowest responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. David Cunningham, Wendy Schumay, and Mike McCully.
Hi, I'm David Cunningham. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. Some of you've known me, some of you've heard from me before. I want to thank one of the council members here, Lynn Quest, for having responded to my email about the timer, because it's one of the first things I want to talk about. I appreciate that there is a timer, I'm always looking at you folks, or when I'm here for the Planning Commission, I never even notice the timer is there, because I'm trying to make contact with the council. I do think that it would be better if the rest of the audience could see the timer, or have another timer set up so it was visible to them. And the other thing is, that I noticed watching the committee as a whole this afternoon, that there's no timer visible to the cameras. So if you're watching it on TV, you don't know what time, how long speakers have gone. So that's just a comment that I wanted to make. The main thing I came up to talk about was affordable housing, and that was prompted by the ADU issue, then the owner occupancy that we had earlier. I'd planned on speaking on that, but I think, really, the issue's a broader issue about affordable housing. And I don't believe, and I think you would be really hard-pressed to find any kind of statistics that were reasonably valid, that would show that building more housing makes housing more affordable, or even reduces the vacancy rate for any length of time. I give you the example of New York City. They went up, and housing is so expensive there, most people cannot live in the city of New York. San Diego is another place where, I had relatives who lived for 50 years in New York City, and I knew just exactly how expensive it was, because they would never have been able to afford there if they hadn't had rent control. San Diego, where I lived for four years, they chose to spread out, and basically, most of you, if you've ever been to San Diego, you know how much of sprawl that is. Housing is still so expensive. I've got friends that live down there, they just lost their house because they couldn't keep up the payments, when they bought it at the top of the real estate market. And I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, that's another place that had a different solution for how to resolve affordable housing, and that was to exclude people from moving in. I go back there once in a while, and there is no affordable housing in that. So I'm not saying that any of these are solutions, but when you talk about building more housing, don't look at that as a solution to affordable housing, because I think they're two totally different things. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Wendy, and then Mike McCully, and Joseph McDonald.
I'm Wendy Scher, and thank you for holding this three-minute timed stump speech for everybody. But I am part of the Happy Valley Neighborhood Association Board, and our neighborhood motto is "We Do What We Can." We've been working for the last year with our planning staff to create an Affordable Housing Committee in our neighborhood, targeting the detached ADUs as a target for how we can get a little bit more affordable housing. We are a big neighborhood, the biggest neighborhood in the city by population, we have about 10% of all of city's population in our neighborhood. We are, we have millionaires living next to the lowest-income block in the county, which is Varsity Village Public Housing. We are very eclectic. We are willing to try it, to have a detached ADU, but we're pretty adamantly against having the non-owner, a non, you know, if people have owned both the units, we want them to live in one of the units, either the detached, smaller unit, or the bigger unit. So we're pretty excited about piloting in 2017, working with the planning staff and our neighborhood property owners, to look at how we can do some infill with detached ADUs in our neighborhood. And we'd like to move forward in a positive way, we try to, we get most of our work done by working positively with our property owners, and we want to make sure that we are on one page as we bring that to the City Council in a couple of months, probably, to get permission to do a pilot project in our neighborhood for the detached ADUs. So just wanted to put that before you, and we'll get back to you about that as we figure it out this fall. So thank you for your listening.
Thank you, Wendy. Mike McCully, Joseph McDonald, and Virginia Herrick.
I'm Mike McCully, 2627 Sunset Drive, and I'm representing myself as Port Bellingham Commissioner tonight, but not the Port Bellingham Commission as a whole. So you saw earlier that Brad showed some images, and one of those images, the Bellingham flag that's proposed, is flying down in front of the port offices and also at our airport. And one of the things that I find fascinating about placemaking is placemaking as identity, and identity as placemaking. So when people are coming through the airport, we're hoping that we can show them something that's specific to Waukesha County, and specific to Bellingham. So their experience here, there's something they take away with them. So I want to say thank you all for your diligent consideration on looking at this flag and hopefully moving it forward. And I'm going to get that parking spot. Thanks for your time, y'all.
Thank you, Mike. Joseph McDonald, Virginia Herrick, and then Mark Sheffield, I think?
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. The city of Bellingham was in the Holy War with the false doctrine of Christianity for a long time. Concerning the Bible-bastard priests, Bellingham has been free-for-free for a month now. The priests are not Christians with their dark message of hate. I have always said, if their metaphysical, metaphorical, cross-burning, terroristic rhetoric is concerned with Christianity, then I want nothing to do with it. The Bible-bastard priests' behavior contradicts the Bible. When they point the finger at someone, they have three points back at themselves. They have been a never-seated witness against God. It's not like God hates everybody, and Jesus is trying to get everybody off the hook. God doesn't, and I want to punish people, and the priests being cruel and satanic in nature, ripped on God's character by punching, by portraying him as a mean punch to God. I can only pray that through God's amazing grace, that the priests will see the earth other ways. The priests are full of bias, and Bellingham is bindin', bindin' to bias, is like Germany bindin' to Adolf Hitler's bias. It is though the public has been drinking for native water and was numb to their terroristic techniques that is started by others. In the priest, if the priests ever displayed their dark message of hate, it is my hopes that the public will hold their heads out of their butts and protest the priests. Thank you, and God bless America, watch if you're still here.
Thank you, Joseph. Virginia Herrick, Mark Sheffield, and James Spash?
Hi, I'm Virginia Herrick, good evening. I'm very thankful to hear that the council this afternoon has returned the requirement for owner occupancy for houses with accessory dwelling units in a single-family zone. I was very concerned that the requirement, that removing that requirement seemed likely, if counterintuitively, to work against the affordability of houses for people trying to buy a home to live in. My concern was that developers seeking to increase their rental stock could easily outbid many first-time homebuyers. The landlord, particularly one with deep pockets and multiple rentals, might be more motivated to extract value from their investment. Because the value of a rental pays back the investment fairly quickly, landlords may be able to afford to sink extra money into a property, pushing up property values. A first-time homebuyer seeking a property to live in is instead motivated by the hope of long-term investment, enhanced by home improvement and sweat equity. That some first-time homebuyer might be counting on an ADU to help make their mortgage payments, they would still have the motivation to protect their long-term investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Mark Sheffield, James, and Sue Kenny?
Good evening, my name is Mark Schofield. I'm a member of the York Neighborhood Association Board of Directors, and I'm here on behalf of the board to read, for the record, a portion of the letter which was recently sent to the council from our board. Dear council members, the status quo of the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs in single-family zones has recently come up without notice as a topic during a committee of the whole of your body. The York Neighborhood Association Board of Directors thought a review and perspective might be in order. Owner occupancy is required in single-family zones to encourage and assure that low-to-middle and fixed-income persons and families could better afford to own a single-family home, or take care of a relative while still allowing the relative a personal living space. Conversely, dropping owner occupancy effectively abolishes the single-family zones throughout Bellingham, drives up the cost of homeownership, given the increase in demand as small-to-large absentee landlords buy to purchase the up-zoned properties. It drives up the cost of renting single-family homes, given the rush by investors and developers to convert single-family homes into duplexes, triplexes, apartments, and boarding houses, and results in the loss of livability and safety, as more and more absentee landlords no longer have a personal vested interest in maintaining safe and quiet rentals. It is our understanding, the vote to abolish the owner occupancy in single-family zones was recorded in the minutes as a valid action to change the comprehensive plan. However, we find that notice was insufficient to allow an actionable vote, and therefore represents a violation of City Process and Open Meetings Law. Reasonably aware citizens were nonetheless unaware that the topic would even come up. Aside from city staff and the council, only those in the know were present. Much of the rest of us were blindsided as a result. Based on the lack of notice, it appears that the minutes from the August 1st, 2016 City Council Committee of the Whole need to be amended to either strike or vote entirely, either strike the vote entirely, or state that the vote be re-characterized as a straw vote. Given the merits alone, which were recognized by the Planning Commission again in 2016, after much review and citizen input, the status quo owner occupancy requirement for ATUs in single-family zones must be retained. Sincerely, York Neighborhood Association Board of Directors. And I was pleased to hear the result of your committee meeting earlier today, and we certainly hope that that result carries forward to the final comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. James, Sue, and then Louise Bjornson.
Hello, my name is James Spike, and I'm with the Happy Valley Neighborhood. And I also came to speak about the ADUs, and I'm appreciative that you rescinded that. I think that several people have spoken very well as to why that ought to be the case. And I think you got your job cut out for you, I think, you know, trying to think about how we can work with our neighborhoods, with people of this community, to try to provide housing that's going to work out, you know, across a large spectrum. I think that the ADUs, you know, the property-ought-to-be-owner occupied, because I think that it allows people, perhaps like myself, who have been in this community for 29 years, worked, eked out a modest living, that one- worked, eked out a modest living at one of our institutions of higher education and still never made more than $30,000 a year, you know. So, for somebody like myself, an ADU could really help out as I'm looking at retirement somewhere in the future, right? And, and I think that, I think that the idea of trying to provide people of modest means an opportunity to, to be able to have, you know, perhaps a little rental property or something, and taking it out of just the realm of, of the, of the people who are able to invest on a larger scale in this community. So, thank you for rescinding that and as you continue to discuss this, think about that as well. And by the way, thank you all for your time on council. I imagine this is not an easy task, right? And some of you I've seen on this council for a number of years and I appreciate that you're always there to hear us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, James. Sue Kenny, Louise Bjornson and Kathy Hassan-Jager. Is Sue here? Is Sue, Sue, okay? No? Louise? I just want to make sure that I'm not bypassing Sue. You're not here? Okay, all right. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you. And also thank you for your afternoon vote today to restore the owner occupancy requirement of the ADUs. We appreciate that a whole lot. The purpose of zoning is to provide predictability. Whether it is single-family zoning or commercial zoning, everyone in that zone then knows what can be built next to them. When we wrote the ADU ordinance, which is similar to that of other cities, it allowed some flexibility in single-family zones with a goal to be minimally invasive and fit into the single-family neighborhoods with the least impact to the person living next door or nearby. We wrote the ADU ordinance with a requirement that ADUs be attached and owner-occupied, just as many other cities require. Owner occupancy fits better with a single-family zone. The ordinance language was much discussed with the people who might be impacted and there was general agreement that this was the best possible solution. We had a lot of public process with that. Another comment is, there's a lot of talk about growth management requirements. After the Growth Management Act was passed in Olympia, our representatives took another look at it because they were afraid of the undue development pressure on our neighborhoods. In 1995, they passed Senate Bill 5567 with the title, "Providing for the Preservation of Single Family Residential Neighborhoods." They added the words, "The comprehensive plan must include a housing element that ensures the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods." Please keep this in mind as you have more discussions about our impacts to our neighborhoods. I have a copy here for you.
Thank you, Louise. Kathy?
Hi, thank you. I'm Kathy Hassan-Jager and I live in the Happy Valley Neighborhood. And I came here tonight because I was terrified at the prospect of ADUs not being owner-occupied. And while I'm very, very grateful that that has been rescinded, I'm still terrified that it even happened, that it even occurred. So, I would hope that you would give some thought to, it's a very important issue and I, I hope that if you ever do want to consider it again, that you do it in a more appropriate way where we would get more notice so we could all give forth our, our thoughts and our feelings about what the effect would be on our community. So, again, I'm grateful, but I'm still concerned that things happen the way that they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, that is all the names I have on the list. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, could you please come down and form a line and if you could state your name? Please state your name if you could for the record.
Hello, my name is Steve James. I'm president of Puget Neighborhood Association. I was not going to take up your time tonight when I found out that you had resented your vote. So, I did mail our remarks to you electronically, so they should be on the record. But I felt an obligation to speak because the board had directed me to address you guys on this issue. The comments are there, so let me say these things. First of all, thank you to the council members who originally voted to not remove the language from, and thank you to the council for changing their mind and realizing that maybe there was another way to proceed. What I want to do is offer an opportunity for you guys to work, and we want to, to work with you, this city council, on ADU ordinances in a, in a constructive way. So, the Puget Neighborhood Association is ready to work with you anytime, anywhere. Just give us notice. We'll give you our ideas and we'll share our thoughts with you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Barton. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I love my neighborhood and it's already changing. It's changing because of the way buildings are being constructed with no regard to directly adjoining residential lots, actually homes that already are pre-existing. My home is a single-family home in the Birchwood neighborhood and I've lived in it now for 11 years. I've been in Bellingham for 23. And I have two buildings that are being built now next door to me that are taking all my light. This bulk and scale of these buildings are overwhelming to their narrowness of my own lot. It's changed my master gardening approach to my yard. I lose light at 2:30, sometimes 1:30 depending upon the time of year now in my living room. I'm looking at a wall from my living room. I'm losing, with this next construction that will be 17 feet, all the light out of my bedrooms. It really isn't right. And my point is, and this is what I've been asking of the council, to please, if you're going to deal with infill, then deal with the people living next to where infill's happening and create, legislate codes that tell our planning department to take a look at directly adjoining lots and figure out this very small list of negative impacts. I would be in far more support of this if this was enacted. But I have a really hard time because of my first-person experience, it's already happening. How can I support infill when current residential homes are being overlooked in terms of their livability? It's really, it's really not right. I ask you all, please, all of you, to have the courage to recognize that this needs to happen, that needs to be looked into, it needs to be dealt with. And I think you will have a far lot more support, right? But it's, I can't, I can't do this because of what's happening to me. I can't support it. I can't ask other people to, but I might really want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak who wishes to speak at public comment? There is a microphone up there if you choose to wish, choose to use that. And if you could make sure the button is pressed on and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Mona Danforth. I'm also experiencing the whole ADU experience. We, I live in the Puget neighborhood and we have a neighbor who, when you describe monstrosity, everybody knows exactly which home I'm referring to as they drive up my street. I, I feel like when he built this, it is his property. He can do what he chooses. He announced to us, several, several of us before he started building his ADU, that he was going to build himself a triplex and then move on. So, now he has built this monstrosity and it's not in the same shape as his normal house. And so, then when I hear now that he doesn't even have to live there anymore, he gets his triplex. He gets rewarded for, for doing, building this massive structure. And, and it's just, it's frustrating to me. I don't know that I would have purchased in a neighborhood if I thought the triplex, if triplexes were permitted, although my husband's real, real excited about it because we also have a detached garage and we have the same structure he has. You know, I'm not excited about it. I love my neighborhood. I'd like to stay there. But it galls me that this man can build this massive structure. He got it permitted. Everyone allowed it. And now he's letting us know or he's, he's making it a triplex. And he would like nothing more than to leave and leave us with the result of this massive thing that he's built. And I just, I don't know. It's frustrating to me. You know, he's, he's told others he considers himself the wolf among sheep. Well, great, I'm a sheep. I'm one of the people that deals with the impact this man left. What's going to stop other large contractors from coming in, purchasing homes and doing the same kind of deal? It's a step-by-step thing. I think one person talked about having the camel with his nose in the tent. Once you let the camel and his nose in the tent, the rest of the camel comes in. And I just, excuse me, I'm nervous and I'm a little upset about it. So, that, this is my current experience with what we're talking about right now. Why should he be rewarded? And, and allowing him to leave what he's built, I feel like is a reward for him because he's on to the next, you know, lower to middle-class income neighborhood to do the next project he has. So, that's where I'm at with that. And I also do feel like we should uphold the rules we have. We have this rule of three and yet we have several houses on our block that have five to six college students all living in the houses. And I just, it sounds like there's not enough interest in stopping that from occurring financially, you know. It's, it's an investigation that nobody wants to spend money to do. But I'm telling you, we've got tons of cars. Our little tiny road is filled with cars, all in, in the front yards and, and on the streets. You can barely make your way down Nevada sometimes. So, that's, thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Mona. Anyone else? Last call for public comment and we'll move on to our regular meeting? No? Okay. Thank you. Is it okay? You want to take five minutes or keep going? Want to take five minutes or keep going? Okay? All right. We are going to take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene with city business. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to public comment tonight and we do appreciate you coming here. Okay, we are going to move on to our report out from our afternoon committee meetings. And our first meeting was Public Works Public Safety. And council member Terry Bornham is the chair.
This is actually from a morning committee meeting. We started right early at nine o'clock this morning. So, yes. We had three items. consists of installing a pretreatment facility at Bellingham's water treatment plant. Bids were opened and publicly read on August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was submitted by Stellar J Corporation of Woodland, Washington in the sum of eleven million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, including applicable sales tax. The engineer's estimate was thirteen million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine, uh, dollars. Both the low bid and the engineer's estimate included the existing pre-purchased equipment contracts which will be assigned to the successful bidder upon contract execution. Hillco Contracting, Inc. of Bellingham, Washington submitted a bid protest challenging the subcontractors' disclosure statement filed by the presumptive low bidder, Stellar J Corporation. Public Works staff reviewed the protest in conjunction with the legal department and for the reasons stated in the staff's attached response letter, recommend that council reject the protest and award the bid to Stellar J Corporation. This morning, the committee recomm-- uh, made the following motion and passed the following motion and recommend that the council pass it. And that's reject the bid protest submitted by Hillco Contracting, Inc. and award the bid to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Stellar J Corporation. And I so move.
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Lillikwist?
Yeah, today I, we have to receive a letter about the protest and this evening we heard the gentleman speak to it. Does that change the legal departments or Public Works assessment? Because, I mean, superficially it sounds concerning, but I don't know all the facts.
Yeah, we received the, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department, received obviously the original protest from Hillco. We also received earlier today, as you mentioned, the, uh, the letter provided today from Mr. Hilius, who's the gentleman that spoke, the president of Hillco. None of the information contained in today's letter changes the staff's position that council should deny the protest, in essence, and award to Stellar J. I'd be happy to go through our reasoning on that in more detail if council would like, but there was no change in our position.
Councilmember Lillikwist?
So I would like to move this forward, obviously, but let's pretend that they continue to try to object. Will that slow down the construction or can a protest proceed in parallel? If they want to?
So assuming that council does award tonight, uh, the city would be required to notify the protester and provide them forty-eight hours prior to awarding contract. So council does authorize us to move forward with, in essence, awarding a contract to Stellar J. We provide the bidder forty-eight hours notice and that provides them time to go to court, that's their remedy, and get an injunction stopping the contract. Assuming they don't do that, there's some other remedies down the road if some of the things that Mr. Hilius is surmising actually do occur, but those do not involve the city. They would be actions between Hillco and Stellar J. And what I'm referring to is, one of the assertions is that Stellar J, that's the prime contractor that we're recommending award, they've listed themselves as a subcontractor, which they're allowed to do in RCW bidding law. They're allowed to list themselves as subcontractor for HVAC and plumbing work. One of the items that is identified in the protest is that Hillco does not believe they're going to perform that work, that when the time comes for that HVAC and plumbing work to be performed, that Stellar J intends on, in essence, bid shopping, going out and finding somebody to do the work cheaper, which is not allowed under RCW. It's not something that can be done either prior or after the bidding process. The city staff doesn't have any reason to believe that that actually will occur. We followed up with Stellar J. They've listed themselves as doing the subcontracting work. They say they're capable of doing the work and we have no reason to believe that they're not. If they didn't do the work, then the remedy for Hillco is between them and Stellar J. That's very clear in RCW's. The city is insulated from that action. So, um, to answer your question, we would not delay the project. We believe it's still the right thing to do to award. We believe Stellar J is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and we believe that's the right action for council to take.
Thank you.
And did, we would normally not, no matter what the names were, never get involved in a situation like that to begin with? For what they're accusing them of?
No. One of the things that, um, this, the city did not include any what would be called supplemental bidder requirements that would require Stellar J to meet any specific requirements of having certified staff on hand at the time of bid. One of the items identified in the protest is that Stellar J does not have employees that are certified to perform this subcontracting work. But there's nothing in the statutes that say, and we don't know that to be true or not true, we didn't request that they provide that information at the time of bid, but there's nothing in the statutes that would not allow Stellar J to staff up, in essence, for the work. So, uh, no, without any supplemental bidding requirements that require the contractor to provide this information, it's not something the city would be involved in at the time of bid award.
Counsel, any other discussions? Okay.
So I'm sorry, Peter Raffato, City Attorney. So I wasn't listening that carefully, but is the motion to both reject the bid protest and award the bid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, any other discussion? All right. And Peter just reiterated the motion for him, so...
Are you saying you don't listen to us? I am not.
Busting.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
End of committee report.
Our next committee, which did happen in the afternoon, was Finance and Personnel and our chair is Councilmember Roxanne Murphy.
I'm going to make this very sweet and brief. We got an update this afternoon on one item. It was the twenty-second, twenty-sixteen second quarter financial review. The greatest news from that is that year-to-date trends for all of our financing is very positive and that construction and related activities are leading the way for this. So we strongly encourage people to look this information up. You can find our presentation at cob.org and that is through the finance department. Or you can also tune into our session where we went through this in greater detail through our committee work. Or if you need to, just call seven seven eight, eight zero three six. That will get you to the finance department. You can get anything you want for that information. End of committee.
Thank you, Roxanne. Next committee was Parks and Recreation and Michael Lillikwist is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. Parks Committee had two items before us. The first one is a resolution authorizing the city to apply for and enter into an agreement for the boating facilities grant for assisting with the development of replacement docks and piling at Bloedel Donovan Park. The city, with the assistance of State Boating Agent, State Boating Grant, installed the existing pilings and dock at Bloedel Donovan in nineteen eighty-three. This is one of two public motorized boat launches on Lake Wacom and is in need of replacement as was shown in pictures this afternoon, and if you've been out there, you know. This resolution would authorize the city to apply for the grant and for the mayor to enter into agreement to receive these funds in the event the grant funds are awarded. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended approval of the resolution and I so move.
Second. Councilmember Lillikwist?
So the concern I raised this afternoon had to do with whether or not accepting this grant because it's fuel tax-related would obligate us to keep that dock open to power boats. And we got kind of some mixed messages this afternoon. It wasn't clear. Staff went back and they clarified that there's a high likelihood that if we did indeed restrict motorized boats, we might have to give back the grant, maybe in a prorated fashion, maybe not. If the dock had aged, we could, you know, not. So there's a little bit of uncertainty there about whether or not our freedom will be curtailed, but staff believes the biggest way out of that is we could maybe, at worst case scenario, buy our way out of the problem by having to refund the grant. I personally don't like our freedom being limited by a financial string, but it's kind of no harm, no foul, we'd have to pay for it one way or the other. Just wanted to make that, clarify that from this afternoon.
Okay, we have a motion and a second in front of us to, um, support the Parks Department to apply for the grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
The second item was a discussion regarding alternative level of service options to improve public access and equity of access to Bellingham parks and park programs over time. During twenty-fourteen, two years ago, during that update of the Parks and Recreation Plan, the PRO, the council directed staff to establish alternatives to level of service options to be included in the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan. Equity, accessibility, prioritization of planning for new parks and park services and maintenance of existing parks were evaluated in the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan update of the PRO plan. This briefing this afternoon was an opportunity for the Parks Committee and the council as a whole to discuss these issues in advance, presenting the committee as a whole with updates on the PRO plan in September. This afternoon, we moved to ask staff to augment some language on possible future levels of service that are already currently under development, at least preliminarily, by city staff but are not ready to be included in this PRO plan and have not been discussed by us or by the staff yet. But they're going to be including, drafting what I call placemaker policies to address those issues. This item was for information only and that concludes the Parks Committee report.
Thank you, Michael. Our next committing was Lake Wacom Reservoir and Natural Resources and Councilmember Dan Townell is the chair.
Thank you. Uh, we had two items before us this afternoon. The first was a resolution authorizing submittal of an application to the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Little Squalicum Estuary Restoration Project. City of Bellingham Public Works Natural Resources submitted a grant application on July twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, to the estuary and salmon restoration program requesting one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars for the construction of the Little Squalicum Estuary Restoration Project in Little Squalicum Park. This authorizing application resolution is required by the Recreation and Conservation Office as part of the grant submittal and review process. The authorizing resolution authorizes the city to submit the grant application and if the grant is, grant funding is awarded, to enter into an agreement using the RCO's project agreement. The committee unanimously recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Second item before us this afternoon was an update on the statewide aquatic invasive species legislation. Brian Heimrich from the mayor's office provided us a kind of summary of the legislative environment moving forward here. I did want to touch on five of the points that he brought forward. Highlights from the draft legislation include a diversion of the public utility tax over the next three biennium that will ultimately raise over two-point-one million dollars annually, the creation of a new local AIS management grant capped at one million dollars, a new permit for small watercraft, a new permit for non-residential or non-resident watercraft, and the ability to form public-private partnerships. This was for information only this afternoon. End of committee report.
Thank you, Dan. That brings us to committee as a whole. We had two items in front of us today. The first one was an amendment to the inter-local agreement for jail services. Just to, a little review here, that the Wacom County Sheriff's Office has communicated that the booking restrictions described in option two will not be imposed if the City of Bellingham agrees to option one in the inter-local agreement for jail services. All the information is provided in our packet. Some information that was shared with us today is there has been a dialogue between the mayor's off, uh, mayor's office and the sheriff's office. And the best option for our citizens that will, would be option one, that will give more flexibility and we are going to limit to two transfers a week, which will allow for actual appearances in front of the judge before they are transported. So is there anything Mayor Kelly or our city attorney wishes to add to that? No? Okay. So we did have a unanimous recommendation to authorize option one for jail services and I so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, and this is to authorize the mayor's office to go to option one for jail services, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item was our comprehensive plan. This was mostly a review of updated language. We did not broach anything new in our subject matter today. There were many motions, of which I don't have a list of all of them, but they were all accepted, none rejected, so I guess that part is positive in us moving forward. But I am going to just turn it over to our director, Rick Seppeler, for a couple comments if there's anything else that you wanted to add about today's comp plan. And then our city attorney, I believe, had a, some comments about process.
Members of the council, I think actually, if it's okay, I'll address the process issues. And I think in general, as council recall, a public was here, a public hearing was held on June sixth on the comp plan and a significant body of testimony, both oral and written, was provided. Council, after that, developed a strategy to review the comp plan. Work sessions were identified by topic and the purpose of the work sessions were to allow for council to review the comments that were raised, discuss them, and provide direction to staff. It's very important to note that in that schedule, it was always anticipated there would be a subsequent public hearing. May notice, that was full disclosure, that the direction for staff was to prepare a draft to be brought to the public, to be weighed. a new permit for small watercraft, a new permit for non-resident watercraft, and the ability to form public-private partnerships. This was for information only this afternoon. End of committee report.
Thank you, Dan. That brings us to committee of the whole. We had two items in front of us today. The first one was an amendment to the inter-local agreement for jail services. Just to, a little review here, that the Wackam County Sheriff's Office has communicated that the booking restrictions described in option two will not be imposed if the City of Bellingham agrees to option one in the inter-local agreement for jail services. All the information is provided in our packet. Some information that was shared with us today is there has been a dialogue between the mayor's office and the sheriff's office. And the best option for our citizens that would be option one, that will give more flexibility, and we are going to limit to two transfers a week, which will allow for actual appearances in front of the judge before they are transported. So is there anything Mayor Kelly or our city attorney wishes to add to that? No? Okay. So we did have a unanimous recommendation to authorize option one for jail services, and I so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, and this is to authorize the mayor's office to go to option one for jail services, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. The next item was our comprehensive plan. This was mostly a review of updated language. We did not broach anything new in our subject matter today. There were many motions, of which I don't have a list of all of them, but they were all accepted, none rejected. So I guess that part is positive in us moving forward. But I am going to just turn it over to our director, Rick Seppler, for a couple comments, if there's anything else that you wanted to add about today's comp plan. And then our city attorney, I believe, had some comments about process.
Members of the council, I think, actually, if it's okay, I'll address the process issues. And I think in general, as council will recall, a public hearing was held on June 6 on the comp plan, and a significant body of testimony, both oral and written, was provided. Council, after that, developed a strategy to review the comp plan. Work sessions were identified by topic, and the purpose of the work sessions were to allow for council to review the comments that were raised, discuss them, and provide direction to staff. It's very important to note that in that schedule, it was always anticipated there would be a subsequent public hearing. I made notice, that was full disclosure, that the direction for staff was to prepare a draft to be brought to the public, to be weighed through a full public hearing process, and then after that, council might consider taking future action or future amendments. Council scheduled the work sessions. All requirements for our meetings were met in terms of notice. There's a minimum 24-hour period. We've exceeded that often. In terms of work sessions per se, it's not required to specifically state what every specific motion or direction would be. The topic is the subject for the meeting, and anything within that topic, as amplified by your consideration of public comment, is fair game. So essentially, you identify we're working on transportation. Anything under transportation can be brought forward and direction provided. It's entirely appropriate to provide staff direction for inclusion in the revised draft. Otherwise, we wouldn't know how to prepare it. We wouldn't know how to focus on choices, and in many cases, there are conflicting issues. It is important to note that nothing that is included in direction to staff has the weight of law. All you're doing is directing us to prepare a revised draft that will be subject to a subsequent public hearing. It's important to note that the draft itself, when it comes out, has no weight of law. It's basically a vessel that is considered fairly in a public process, and council may further alter it, change it, modify it, or add to it based on comments received. It is only after that forthcoming public hearing, that we have tentatively scheduled at this point in October, I think it's now permanently scheduled because we noticed it, we provide three-day notice on that, that council might take action after reviewing the testimony, considering all of the written comments, and providing direction and specific modifications based on what you hear. So it was asserted during testimony that you didn't follow process, that you circumvented process, that the public was not included. I beg to differ. Based on standard practice, council was following its rules and following the process rules of consideration, especially with the note that the public would have an opportunity to comment in full, unlimited in written comment and timed in public comment. So in terms of that, we'll continue with your schedule and direction, and we look forward to preparing a revised draft. As noted at today's work session, our hope is to get that revised draft out a full two weeks before the public hearing. And again, wouldn't presuppose to state what council might do, but it's likely you'll continue written comment for a period after the public hearing, because we all know we get our best ideas after we leave the meeting. So I hope that answered the process questions that were raised.
Thank you very much, Rick. It's been troubling to hear people's perception that we didn't follow process, and I appreciate that you stated that for us. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who has additional comments on that, on the comp plan? Okay. And actually, Rick, maybe if I could ask, I don't have the presentation from this afternoon, but do you have the next upcoming dates of our plan in front of us? Because I just want to make sure that we are trying to do as much as we can to let people know what our dates are. It wasn't in the...
Well, certainly put it on the website. The next meeting, it appears, is not needed since there were no additional issues identified in reviewing the public record to date. That was scheduled, I think, for the...
It was September 12.
September 12. The subsequent meeting will have the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan being considered. There are two sessions, as you might recall. Both of those predate the public hearing, so we can get the comments put in.
And that's September 19.
That's correct.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next thing up for us is our approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes in front of us this evening. They are both evening. This first one is for August 8, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. The next set of meetings was for August 29, 2016. Oh, wait a minute. I am just flying ahead of ourselves. We had one set of minutes, and I have been given this afternoon's already, and I'm trying to get through it. So we'll just hold off on that till next week. Okay, let's move to older new business. Anyone? Councilmember Murphy.
Yesterday, I had the great opportunity to reach a personal milestone, but it's going to support the community, I hope. I was able to do a century bike ride, which is 100 miles in one day. But this was accomplished with massive support from a really great organization, the Mount Baker Bicycle Club. Every year, they host the Chuckanet Classic, and it's a great opportunity for people near and far to come and take part in our recreation community through 25, 50, 62, 100, or even 125, I believe, miles. And so this is such a great event for our community because it not only fosters good economic development with people coming and enjoying our community, but it made me even more proud to live in our community that's just so beautiful and so supportive of our cycling, all of our cycling community. Just wanted to mention that through training for this, I racked up some 450 miles to get myself ready for just 100. But I mention that only because it's really impressive that there was only one car throughout all of those experiences that came even remotely too close to me. So I think that really speaks to how both Wackam and Skagit Counties support cycling. So if you've ever thought about getting into it or more into it, this is the place to be. So I really want to thank the Mount Baker Bicycle Club, and I hope everyone had a fantastic time yesterday.
Councilmember Murphy gets a wellness ribbon. Anyone else? Councilmember Barker.
So earlier today, I discussed some of the work that we've been doing to work toward food security solutions, and we'll be having a meeting, so you're welcome to go back and listen in to it all business. I wanted to thank the community also for coming forward, recognizing the difficulty that that part of the neighborhood has been having. Sustainable Connections vied for a grant from Wackam Community Foundation and got a substantial amount of money to work with Birchwood to do an actual capow for Birchwood and provide a sense of place throughout and kind of build community there while we're all kind of dealing with these other devastating situations. So that will be coming out with the Neighborhood Association, and I'm really looking forward to it, and maybe some of you guys can participate.
Councilmember Lillikquist, did you want to bring up your point from this afternoon? Okay. Anyone else for older new business? Okay, executive session report. We had an executive session today. We had three items in front of us. The first one was litigation Swatosh versus the City of Bellingham. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. For information and discussion only, and no action was taken. Second item was a potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. For information and discussion only, no action was taken. And our third item was another potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. For information and discussion only, no action was taken. And now, we will move to Mayor Kelly and the mayor's report.
I'll be quick. First thing is, I don't know if you saw the article in the newspaper about the Lighthouse Mission and the shelter. I thought the article was very good. I have to admit I was surprised when I saw it, but that's good, because it's, you know, everybody doing their part. I'm really pleased that there will be an opportunity for people to have shelter 24 hours a day for six-plus months as an interim solution, because right now, we don't have, obviously, a location or a shelter that people can go to. So it will mean another 80 beds for people during the winter months, which I really appreciate the mission doing that, and they are doing that without support from the city. So congratulations to them for taking that on. Secondly, with your food desert, I did talk to Vanessa Blackburn today, and she said she'd be happy to attend your meeting. And she has a lot of experience on the community solutions kind of style of doing things and staffing, been the staff support for a couple of those groups, so hopefully that will be helpful to you. I have four or six people to just inform you about that I'm appointing. Greg Hoffenbacher, Kay Riddell, and Eric Charbonneau to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission, Brandon Hausman to the Public Works Advisory Board, reappointment of Bill Hassanjager, Courtney Lang to the Parks and Recreation Board, and then I need three for your approval, mayor's appointment of Paul George and Kate Clark to the Bellingham Arts Commission.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
And finally, Andrew Hines to the Music Foundation, Museum Foundation Board.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I don't think we have a music foundation, but we probably, Terry would like it if we did.
I would.
And I am going to be unavailable for the next 12 days, starting tomorrow. So, but if there's an emergency, please call Brian or Vanessa, and they can get ahold of me, or they can get me so that I can respond to you. So I just thought I'd let you know that. So Mayor Protam is in charge.
Who's that?
I see him.
Oh, we're in trouble.
I didn't want to encourage him, you know, that much, but...
I can give him the phone number, I won't.
Anyway, so I will see you by October 12, or, it's October 12, September 12. It's a couple months. September 12. Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Consent agenda.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, the motion in front of us, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero for consent agenda. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21321, in ordinance vacating the 20-foot-wide alley abutting lots 1 through 20 on Block 274 of the first addition to the town of New Wackam, and the west 10 feet of Franklin Street, abutting lots 13 through 20, and the west 20 feet of Franklin Street, abutting lots 11 through 12 of Block 274 of the first addition to the town of New Wackam, all within the city of Bellingham.
Move third and final.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Gene Knudsen.
Yes.
Michael Lillikquist.
No.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-1. Michael Lillikquist opposed. Agenda Bill 21323, in ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code Title 19 Impact Fees, including Chapters 19.04, 19.06, 19.08, and adding a new chapter, 19.10, to allow for the deferral of impact fee collection for new single-family detached and attached residential construction.
Move third and final.
Second.
Michael Lillikquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Gene Knudsen.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us. Until next time, we are adjourned.